... for which is fans, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, approval of the meeting agenda.
Aye.
Miranda, Matt, now on favor?
Aye.
Approval of the minutes, whether it's from the February 15th meeting.
I did that first. Russ, you up?
Matt, on favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You have no presentations or acknowledgements or anything to that effect, I see?
Yep, nothing.
Public comment. All right, at this time, public, we do have one signed up. At this time, public, I'm invited from those individuals who have signed in these five minutes prior to the sort of board meeting, wait to be called on by the board president, identify yourself. Let me give your remarks, not more than three minutes. Appoint a spokesperson if a concern is a group concern, or to supplement verbal presentation with written reports if necessary or desired. Personal comments from a member of the community staff or Board of Education will not be considered appropriate. A representative will respond to each speaker within five business days. Public comment can also be submitted via email to susan.hassenauer@nercstd.org, or When emailing in a public comment, please use the subject line "public comment." Person signed up is Dave Glett. Can you come on up or just stand right up there and identify yourself and?
Good to go.
You did good.
That's me.
Hey Dave, I'm gonna link you up here so.
Oh man.
You're on like a.
You got the timer on.
And then you want to sit down in your pocket?
Sure.
I gotta work on that.
Would you like to come over here in front of the.
Oh my goodness.
Yeah, she's got it.
Yep, anywhere near kind of this area will be.
My profile in front is.
All right, time starts.
Thank you, thank you. I was told once that you really ought to have, have your remarks written down so you get everything all just right. I couldn't do that, so I'm, I'm in a little bit of trouble. What I'm doing is, well, it's what I do anyhow, but I'm, I'm following up on the little discussion I started on this, this overall curricular matter of DEI. And, and thank you very much for superintendent of answering that last time I was here, that that is New York State curriculum. And to me, that's the problem. You see, DEI is a, it's very pervasive in our society right now. It's up and down in, in politics, it's up and down in the corporate world, and it, but it is, it follows a particular political bend and direction. And that's my problem, is that DEI is, well, a danger, is a danger of politicizing those who, say in a school, impressionable children, that DEI just may be turning them and conditioning them to a particular political point of view. And I didn't, my, just my thinking is that a, a political point of view is, it's kind of not fair to, for one political point of view to be, to be pushed on impressionable So that's, that's, that's the main part of my comment, just following up on that. Now, in, in, one more thing, we just pledged, did the pledge of allegiance, and that concerns the, the authority of this body. A school district has authority to tax, and to hire, and to build, and to teach, among other things, you know, it's a big, there's a lot of stuff going on with the school district, and this is a board that has, you know, oversight. That, the, a school board gets its authority from the state of New York, in this case, you know, because we're in the state of New York. And then, the state of New York gets its authority from the United States of America, from those United States, all of them, you know, kind of put together, the federal government of those United States, all right? That's fine. Last thing, there's one more line of authority that I would like to point out, and that this is one nation under God. The DEI kinda, to me, represents a godless philosophy, so let me just bring up God as our final authority. Thank you. There's no hook?
Moving on, seven, all business, business, issues of public interest. Responded vows, we don't have any previous public comments to acknowledge. Verbal reports?
I do, I do. No, 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 we don't, but I do want to add to 7.2, that's not on here, something I pulled off before I came, if I could add it. It's just, I'm gonna need some approval from folks regarding the girls bowling team, so let me start by saying congratulations to the girls bowling team for going to states. They are amazing. And this has been done in the past, but I know based on our practice, you would want to know, they are looking to go up the night before. Parents would be taking them, there is dinner planned at the Cheesecake Factory, a visit to the mall, and in rooms by 9:00 PM. This whole process would go the same way with the liability forms, as would the trip. Part of the reason they're doing this is that they do have a very early time, they have to arrive at 7:30 AM at that location, which means they would probably have to leave if they didn't go up the night before, about 4:30 AM in the morning, 4:00 AM, and then there's the time change. So, they are going, I want to say it's either Binghamton or Albany. I'm not sure which one. Yeah. It's at Strike and Sparlane's. So they will be having and staying at the Embassy Suite. So, right now, currently, we're also reaching out to Sheila for understanding how busing would work if it went up the night before, just in the event that the liability forms did not work. So I just wanted to present that upfront, so that you were aware.
Do you need a vote on that?
Yes, if you're okay with the liability forms on this one.
Anybody in favor?
Yep.
Aye. Also, two congratulations, because the boys also did win sectionals for bowling as well.
Yes.
So moving on, verbal reports, 8.1 instructional.
Just a, just a couple of, of items. We have a half day coming up, March 8th, for our secondary level to participate in some professional learning. This will be school-specific, to their building improvement plans. So our department leaders and instructional coaches and administration have been working to plan that, along with our directors, Teresa Prinze and Sandra Ordin will be working with some of our behavioral health team members and psychologists on that day as well. So lots of planning happening there for next week. Looking ahead to our superintendent's conference day on March 17th, that work will be more focused on district-level pieces, surrounding our curriculum, and some development of some pacing guides, some looking at some data, historical trend data, and really having our departments and grade levels come together to dig into some real solid time together on that day. So, those are two pieces. I think Sue might talk a little bit about some of the things happening in the arts, but I'd just like to highlight, March is a busy month for our music and our art departments, lots of great events coming up that include our musical and an art show, the Wayne County Art Show. We'll be hosting in all county, yep, the Cavalcade, the festival, I mean, it's just, you look at the calendar and it's amazing. So, we really do have a fabulous department when it comes to music and art, and, you know, I just want to recognize the effort that those department members put in, and we have some students who really have developed their skill, and have some really talented students that will be showcasing their work, so, thank you.
Good, moving on, finance.
I want to talk, but not come through. The risk assessment is, interviews have been completed for the audit committee type thing that's been going on there with staff. The internal audit work is being done as we speak daily, so we're getting different pieces to them to work on. Still working on budget gathering information, and just an FYI, the Wayne County Office of Real Property and Tax Services is no longer going to be printing tax bills for us next year. Won't get into the huge, long story, but this has been a, over a year process to have them not do this. So that's why you've noticed some of your town and village tax bills have started to look differently. So there is a county contract that, and this is everybody in Wayne County, not just us, but there is a county contract that we can jump on to have the same company do them, which in one way is bad, because Wayne County's not printing them, but the other way, now all your tax bills are gonna look the same, because the town, the village, and the school districts are all gonna come out looking very similar. So they'll have some subtle differences, we have library tax, you know, those little differences like that, but at least they're all going to look the same, I believe, the town of Arcadia, the village of Newark, and if the school district does it too. So, I see no other reason not to do that, so I've already reached out to Sharon Verheek to see how it's gone, other than questions on tax bills, she hasn't had any issues, so people are becoming familiar with them. So using the same company would be a good move to continue to do that. We don't have to do an RFP, the county has already done it, we can piggyback off it. So, just wanted to put that out there. I've already worked with the company, just a little bit with some information gathering for us, they're working on some other taxes right now, and ours are the next one, but they're looking for that. So I just wanted to share that with you, and we'll work out the fine details with that, but it's just jumping on their, their contract, so we're all set. Budget gathering already said, so I think that's about all that's in my world right now.
Matt, you're up.
Thank you. Next week, we'll be heading to Pennsylvania for a recruitment event. We're building the pool, expanding the pool of candidates that we're drawing from, so that's the first of the official teacher recruitment events that we'll be attending. Additionally, on March 17th, we'll be running one of our positive psychology trainings for some of our staff members, so we're looking forward to getting that going too, and increasing the number of opportunities for that within the district.
Sorry, I was gonna announce everything, and I was like, oh, I really was gonna just talk about the musical this weekend coming up. But yes, the high school musical is this weekend, it is The Wedding Singer, it's Friday, Saturday, and Sunday at 2:00. Fingers crossed, I guess the weather is not looking good for Friday night, so if everyone can keep your fingers crossed that we don't get the snow that we haven't had all year. The students have worked really hard, and it's gonna be a very exciting weekend for them. Additionally, this weekend, we have the elementary all county vocalist and instrumentalists at the Williamson Senior High School. And then, we also have, coming up on March 7th, the Cavalcade of Bands, and that's all Newark bands coming together. And then lastly, I hope, I hope I'm not missing anything after you, you've put me on the spot. We have the 41st Annual High School Art Exhibit that opens March 2nd and goes to March 31st. It will be at the main gallery at 108 West Miller Street.
And the Festival of Song.
And the Festival of Song, I'm sorry, I didn't go all the way down, that will be March 14th. And then we host all county on March 17th and 18th. See, that's a lot, I was really focused on this weekend, the musical, everybody come out. And then tonight, we also have a sectional game in Bloomfield for boys, and then again, congratulations to bowling, both boys and girls. And then, the other item that I was gonna talk about is, we had our second community collaboration meeting today, and that really is where the community comes together. It started with the, the community policing, and now it's, it's moved into a subgroup that's planning a student leadership conference for our high school students that will be linked with the community. So it's myself, the mayor, the police chief, and a district attorney that are putting this together. We're still in the very beginning of planning, however, we're looking at a title and a description around the following. Working toward common ground, the importance of community, and whether you're out in the community or within your school community. Helping students understand about being part of a community makes us feel as though we are part of something greater than ourselves. It gives us opportunities to connect with people, to reach out for our goals, to make us feel safe and secure. A true community is about being connected and responsible for what happens. Ultimately, themes around this will be about student empowerment, ownership, and serving others. There are more people on the committee, I was just focused on, who was there today to start finalizing this. There's also Josh Arnold, there's also Wayne Behavioral Health, there's also our fact team members, so we do have supporting folks on that as well. And so we're really excited, because we would like to kick this off with the opening of school next year, to set that stage around community. So kids will be empowered through multiple sessions in the day, and then we're gonna connect it back with different action planning steps that they can take to be actively involved in, in either of the arenas. So it should be exciting, and more details to come, as that really gets outlined in much more of a capacity to be able to share, but it'll be exciting.
Does that elaborate more on their capstone? Because with capstone, they have to do a part of how they are immersed in their community, right?
Right, so this is more about student leadership and empowerment, like, what skills and traits can you have that you can bring yourself anywhere and be part of something? What does a true community mean to you? When you, when have you been part of it? And how can you become an integral part in our community and be engaged and make a difference and have an impact? So, what would that look like? So it's exciting.
Well done. Nine, review of.
Did he say well done or all done?
Mary's second, Russ, all in favor?
Aye.
Moving on, 10.1, four committee meetings, mediated legislative, let's go up for our county, Wayne Fingerless Exposies, what?
Wayne Fingerless Exposies meeting is next Monday, so there's nothing new to report on that, except for our trip to Wayne Tech Career Center on April 19th. For our legislative committee, I, today, Rural Schools Association had an update on legislation. They were talking about both revenue and for state, and then also federal issues at the federal level. There, what is to report, they're still talking about how the universal food program's going to be implemented for New York State. The question is, most, biggest is on the funding. And then for federal level, the, for the universal food program of what we do is the community eligibility. So they, what Heather Zeller has mentioned for that is, they are looking at moving the poverty level, so there's been a lot of talk about how that is, that threshold is gonna go down, and that's gonna be affecting a lot of our districts in the rural area. So, she said, we gotta keep our eye on that. And then, there's another bill in the federal level about teacher salary mandates, but it's a bill that's just in the thought process. So that's another funding, talking about our foundation aid. So that's for that. And then for county, we have our first annual spring conference, everybody has a flyer. This is open up to community members as well. So this will be on Friday, March 24th. The cost of it is $50 per person, and there is going to be, the conference is entitled Meeting of the Minds, so there's a lot of presenters, as well as Susan, and it's gonna be a great day to talk about safety and security. So I invite everybody to come for that. And that's all I have, Russ, do you have anything more? Oh, and this weekend, I forgot, if you're interested in running for the board, four county is hosting a seminar at the Exposies Conference Center, so that will be this Saturday at 9:00 AM. And you can come and listen to Mary for the first year perspective, and then mine is on legislation, and there's gonna be a superintendent, we're gonna have a lawyer present, and a couple of veterans. So it's a good event to see what, how it is to be a board member. That's it.
Russ, did you have any?
Yeah, I had the pleasure last week of awarding a, some gift cards to two Newark students who, I forgot to bring their names in, but they, they did, they won the logo contest for four county, so I came in and presented them their gift cards. They did a very good job, and basically the whole class, graphics class, and each, you know, each group entered, entered a, a logo, along with many of the 20 schools in four county. And Newark one.
Just saw their name though.
Yeah. I am not going to say their names right. Vera and Toby? Toby Edminster and Vera Butchko. Thank you. So congratulations to them.
All right, moving on, 10.2, subcommittee reports, audit budget, really nothing more to report than we've already gone over. Policy committee. Meeting next week. Next week. Want, want to go down tonight? Yep, as we go. Facilities and safety committee, we just, basically, you want to go, how we did a walk through the high school, you want me to talk about that? All right, did a walk through the high school to look at unused space, utilized in a better way yesterday, which was pretty good, you know, Scott, myself, Julie, Susan, the high school principal, assistant principal, and that, we were all there. And my, well, and Mike Steve was there as well, and DJ. So it was good, we walked through the whole school, took us about two hours, so. Instructional committee, Mary, you were there today?
Yes, I was. I got to go to three different classrooms, a sixth grade science, a seventh grade ELA, and an eighth grade math, and the continuity from what you and I have seen at K5 is continuing up through eighth grade, and it was very obvious to see. The extent of the vocabulary and the development of the language skills in all of the content areas there, it was really exciting to see. And being a retired teacher from the middle school, it was even more exciting to see how there was alignment, and going back to the reading of books, 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 and it was fantastic. Yep, it was great.
Now, we have, you were, so we did, middle school, the high school, and high school on April 13th. Yeah, April 13th. All right, co-curricular, really got nothing new, correct?
No.
To the facility, so March 28th would be the next co-curricular meeting. Now, 10.3, the second reading adaption of policy 8450, home, hospital, or institutional instruction, homebound instruction, we needed a first approval, Russ, second, Julie, all in favor? Aye. And then before we go down there, we'll get these guys out of here, I know they don't want to be here all night. Guys, you can come on up, we'll sign your stuff if you want to get out of here. Huh? I know, but they don't want to.
You guys picked a good night, you know, we didn't have a lot of presentation.
Yeah, well, someone tipped them off, they picked a short night, it was good. Yeah, if you were here. Yeah. What's, is your name on there? Yeah.
What's the date?
21st.
It's March 1st.
March 1st, 21st.
Well, I was gonna say 28th.
All right, so, moving on, 11, future agenda items, so we have student behavior action steps, special board meeting, March 29th, 4:00 PM district office, send a day program feedback, I'm not repeating that one, 11.4, it's every time, P U E, I know, but it's there every time. And then 11.5, safety and security update, position's ongoing, which is also gonna be part of our next linkage meeting too, so that's upcoming. And that would be it. So, we are now gonna move into an executive session to discuss. So we are now going to move into an executive session to discuss personnel. I need a motion. Russ, Mary, or Matt, all in favor? Aye. Thank you for coming. I'm taking this off.